I'm going to call this meeting to order. Roll call.
McKnight.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment on agenda items?
Yes, I have Jenny Tompkins for the Pollinator Gardens. Hi, members of council. I want to just say Jenny Tompkins, 665 North Street is my address, and I'm a member of the Environmental Advisory Council, though I'm here to speak as an individual and a native pollinator, planter, and gardener. I want to thank you for taking on this subject and trying to address the fact that there are folks in the city who've been cited by property maintenance for basically having plants that are higher than 10 inches that are identified as grasses when in reality are native plants, often flowers. I think it's worth pursuing, and I'm totally on board with the EAC having a role in providing an advisory space and comment on it. However, I will caution that having reviewed what was sent to me on March 14th with the caveat that it could have changed dramatically since then, I don't know what the current draft of the ordinance or the property maintenance code provision reads. I have questions and/or concerns with effectively every provision of the three-page document that I've seen, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. I think there's a lot of opportunity for discussion and good discussion and agreements. But I think it may over-correct on an issue that probably impacts few people and would put the burden of proof on folks who want to have native plants and a minimum pollinator plants to prove that they've somehow not done something wrong. There's a number of provisions, 10 or so, that I think go above and beyond what we're trying to accomplish here. So I've gone ahead and talked to a master gardener, contacted the master gardeners locally, and contacted Penn State Extension. They have a native plant guide that's often used by industry professionals, landscapers and otherwise, and would like to consult them. I think there are opportunities for groups like that to weigh in on language before it's ultimately passed. So we have an EAC meeting on Thursday, and I've also asked that it be on the agenda for their councilman Vogel is a member, and she's aware of all of the developments. So just ask that you don't do anything formal, and that you give us some additional space and time for us to revise that.
Thank you.
So the notes we have are not complete, correct, from the EAC?
The notes we have were the notes from that meeting where the EAC discussed it that Jenny couldn't make. So then Jenny provided very valuable insight following that meeting. Yeah.
It took a few weeks for me to meet with the chair to be able to try to give feedback, and so here's where we are today.
Good.
So is Jesse going in to look, or is he invited to that meeting, the EAC meeting? Like our outside inspectors and things like that to listen and answer questions, or?
That hasn't been assessed.
Okay.
Jesse, I was just wondering. If that makes sense, maybe we can talk about what's it just about?
Do you know what I mean? Since he wrote it, right, like we can maybe have a discussion. I mean, I don't know if that's.
Knox wrote that.
Oh.
If there's capacity for Thursday, that's great. Otherwise, I'd offer to meet with city solicitor staff if something is valuable. And preemptively, if we get to a point where there are questions, I would happily host council members at my home to talk about why some of the provisions would directly counteract the actions I've taken on my property.
I know, I would love that because it would give me a better.
Not the best time of year, obviously.
Yeah, no, exactly. That would be just for my understanding, right, like because it's not my wheelhouse. Definitely yours, right?
Happy to, but thank you for hearing me out and giving some space.
I also have Barb Newcamp.
I'm up first, wow. I thought I was on the last one. Hey, I am Barb Newcamp, and I represent Grow Meadville, and I specifically represent the community garden and city gardens that are planted around the city. The concept is small plots around the city that grows vegetables, herbs, flowers, and everyone that's there has a help yourself sign, so people can walk by and pick whatever they want. There's a couple benefits. One thing is it's a nice looking, nice to look at, and also it's nice for people to get familiar with fresh vegetables that they might not. The first one was on Chance Relay that we started, and I can't tell you how many times people walk by while we're working on it and say how much they appreciate having it, you know? And there's things like small tomatoes, some bailes, parsley, peppers, I mean, things that can be picked, you know? And right now, we have four of them. There's the Meadville Medical Center has a large one up on Randolph Street in Mohegan. Chance Relay in town, the alley on Chance Relay has one. The Emmanuel Church has one, supported by Ann Cohen, and there's one more. Where is it? Oh, Unitarian. They have one that's being sponsored by the drug and alcohol group. So you know, it's just, we're looking for more people to sponsor one, and sponsoring means you plant it, water it, and maintain it for the season of the growing season. And it's a big commitment. I mean, you have to get there, and you have to make sure it's watered and planted, but it's, the benefit of the city is paramount. And so I'd like to see a lot of them, a lot of them around town. So if you know anybody that wants to have a plot, I'm more than happy to have them connect with me, and I hope that we can continue to grow Meadville.
Barb, can I ask a quick question? You said we have four at this moment that are sponsored? So there are more areas that people could sponsor for the year already that are available?
There's one at the psychological business over by Juniper Village, and then there's another one. And then somebody just told me today there's a couple that they've seen. And oh, one of the big things where I'm here, which I almost forgot, was I'd like the city to have one. We used to have one in the parking lot over here, some tomatoes. It doesn't have to be a vast amount of vegetables, but there was one in the parking lot, which was, I was told, was not available for work on during working times. And I think the city should have a city garden. That's kind of what I think. And so I'd like to see the city promote this agenda by having your own. And like I said, it doesn't have to be immense. It doesn't have to be anything. Although I did see that nice little corner over there by Diamond Park when I was walking here. But it can be just something that represents the city gardens, which I would like to see the city do it. And so I'd like to know if there's anybody within the employee realm of the city to maybe commit to, or a group of people, commit to having one this year. That's what I'd like to see. And they can contact me. All right. Is anything else? Any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all. Notice of executive session meetings?
None.
Approval of minutes? Can I have a motion to approve April 1st, 2025, meeting minutes?
Second.
Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Communications?
Included in your packet is a proposal from the Meadville Council on the arts for a legal graffiti space.
And so like for today, it's just someone submitted something and.
Correct.
And we would need to reach out to them and say, hey, what next steps? I was a little bit, you know, or there, I was wondering if there are restrictions against having like a graffiti area? That was a thing that came up, reading that.
If this is something that council wants staff to look into as a possibility, we can do that and then have it as a discussion item on a future agenda.
Okay.
But at the moment, it is just that this was received and given to council as a communication.
One thought on that, on this specific communication, I think several of the sites that were identified are private property, so I don't know what our role would be. I mean, we can be like a willing partner, but like I think that securing the partnership with the property owner would probably be the step.
We could be a facilitator.
And right, like so this was given to us to look at?
Yeah.
And just to be clear, I think they know that. They know the, right, they're looking into some of those sites, but they're also just wanted us to have it in case we have any ideas. I asked if they wanted to come and speak at council today to tell us more, and they're not ready for second steps. They're not sure, right? So there's more they're doing. They just wanted to make sure we had this, and if we have any ideas to reach out or, you know, because it's just in the beginnings of the. And that is well and good. That's great. I'm glad that that happened. To me, this opens up a larger question of like, what is our policy on communications to council? Like, I think at one point, we started to say like it had to be related to agenda items. I'm looking on our website, and the link is not working for what the policy is. We should probably fix that, but it would be, right, so this is not a thing about it. This is not an item on our agenda. I was under the impression it's supposed to be about agenda items. Getting clarity on what our policy for communications to council is, would be, I would appreciate that.
If it's something that they want added as a discussion item and not just simply a, hey, this, here is this, then we need to have some further discussions about that. But as far as it can be, I was asked to put this on as a communications to council. I don't know if just maybe the mayor received it solely. I'm uncertain. But we can clarify and make sure the link works on the website.
Yeah, so that we can see, but it seems to me that, you know, we get lots of communications, and when people want all of us to have it, then it would be a communication, right, like. That's what I thought. It's originally true, but I feel like at one point, we tightened that a little bit. And if that's not true, if that's not the case, that would just be helpful to know. Perfect.
I do have one thought. Based on the skate park at the Mark, and like people would, in the past, had said, wouldn't that be a good location? Like if it was, like kids could do art and stuff there, so. And I did even, Jeremy back and say, just like, maybe, I don't know, because it came up like way back when I first started on council. It's like, this would be a relatable thing, so I don't know.
And again, council and the city can act as a facilitator between Mark Board and the MCA.
Yeah, if that's something that, yeah. Great. Managers report.
I'm sure as you saw in the newspaper last week, the market house was awarded a little over $560,000 for the roof replacement. This does encompass the entire roof as well as the framing that needs to be done on the property. So it's very exciting. The rest of the funds, it's about a $677,000 project in total. The rest of the funds will come out of already allocated capital, which is about a $175,000 of city capital funds.
That's great. That's really good.
It's very exciting. Very appreciative to the governor and DCD for this.
And we don't have to borrow money to do it.
That is correct.
And the goal is to get it done before winter.
Yes. So it'll, it goes to bid.
And we'll start the design portion of it. That, we'll use the design, capital funds to do the design portion, so that doesn't need to be bid out. Can get the ball rolling, then the actual construction work will be bid out. So we're hoping to have that by, I don't know, May or something, but we're waiting on the formal contract from DCD for the funds.
To be the sense, we had done the kind of historical, like the review of the building and assessment, and did that help?
It absolutely did, and that's what we've, we tell the Mark and things, the conditions assessment is a third party. It's an engineering firm or someone of that nature coming in and identifying needs, and then you actually have documentation to support your request, so it absolutely, it absolutely helped.
It's really exciting. Okay, is that all for you? Old Business, Ordinance, Third and Final Reading, Zoning Amendment Dwellings. Can I have a motion to approve the Third and Final Reading?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
No updates since last meeting.
Roll call.
If you.
Oh, go ahead.
If you would delete one clause on page two, or actually one word on page two, I could support this. And that's at the very bottom, "to be," and as permitted, to be used in the residential zone. If you eliminated that, I would support this.
Say that again, Jim. "To be," what was the word?
"R," residential.
That feels substantial. I mean, that's an entire zone, so that would mean.
Read the advertiser's final reading.
As a consensus, we said it would be okay in residential, correct? Is that not what?
We said in all zones.
That's the conversation that I think we've been having, right, which is still that setbacks would apply the other, right, the other kind of pieces of zoning would apply to those buildings. It's just saying that you can use it and have an accessory dwelling. Yeah, that's what, that's my thought, okay. It doesn't otherwise impact the character of the neighborhood. It's still residential. It's just adding for another diversified use. All right, we'll vote on it how it is. Roll call.
An ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Articles 1302, 1303, 1305, and 1306 to provide for new forms of residential dwelling units, to provide revised minimum standards for habitability in terms of floor area and open space, to provide an option for special exception to construct single-family dwellings below a threshold of floor area, subject to criteria to encourage the form of the surrounding neighborhood to remain intact, and providing for an effective date severability and a repealer. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Passes.
Ordinance, Third and Final Reading, Zoning Amendment, tobacconists. Can I have a motion to approve the Third and Final Reading?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Again, no changes since last meeting.
No. We received a letter from Crawford County Planning after this was passed first and second time.
Correct.
And they made some suggestions for changes.
As they do. I will say that the planning commission was made. That letter was provided to planning commission to, that had sifted through those recommendations and.
It was verbally summarized because of the joint member on both counties.
Right, because Sally sits on county planning commission, right, and city planning commission. I think that there was discussion about, if I'm remembering the planning commission's conversation, the point was well taken about kind of codifying it more systematically and less piecemeal. I think there was an interest in that, but just recognizing what's realistic. And then I think the other conversation I'm recalling was on, no, lost it, never mind.
What do you remember, Peter? But I think that the planning commission still felt comfortable moving forward.
Yes, I think most substantially, there was a question of the standardization amongst the provisions applicable only to tobacconists versus other specialty retailers. And as I think I had said before, the issue that was brought up to me was to address the issues of tobacconists in particular. I think over the past couple of months, we've done that pretty comprehensively as a distinct form of retail, as we'll see in the introductions to the ordinance. So even though I might agree personally with the substance of, with the sentiment of the having consistency amongst such things, it would take many more months to apply such consistency to all and every other similar possible use in those four districts. So for expediency's sake, I'm comfortable with us moving forward.
I don't, oh, I was just gonna, I do recall the other conversation that was standing out to me, which is related to the point you just made, Peter, about, I think that county planning in their letter talked about that maybe the standard that is kind of set is conditional uses for other types of retailers, where this, the ordinance in front of us is looking at tobacconists by special exception. And the conversation was, oh, well, maybe they, rather than making, changing this to be special exception, maybe in fact, more things should be special exception and conditional use.
Yeah, well, now I Google that and I ask Peter, indeed, it's like, who's going to cover? Is it the governing? What is it, council, or the zoning? And it's like, I want zoning to do it, so I disagree with the county. It was kind of like, it should be how it is, because that's how we do, that's how we do Meadville.
You're saying because a special exception is seen, is heard by the zoning hearing board?
Yeah.
And that's the precedent rather than.
What we have in place.
Yeah.
Pragmatically speaking, the same demands are placed both upon council and the zoning hearing board when it comes to evaluation of special exception and conditional uses. You'll both have to evaluate it against specific criteria that's enumerated in the ordinance, and then both have the ability to impose additional criteria for the purposes of, you know, maintaining health and safety, of public welfare, and the intent of the zoning ordinance. Practically speaking, I believe staff feels that the zoning hearing board as appointed to exactly do that job is probably the best body to function in that imposing an additional conditional use on this when similar other special exceptions applied to other retail uses that aren't conditional uses would be a duplication of procedure that I believe would still be best housed in the practices of the zoning hearing board rather than imposed with an additional procedure on council. I believe the imposition of either special exception or conditional use tends to be political, whether it is better to have a use brought before a hearing before council, whereas zoning hearing boards don't get similar interest as a council meeting night, and whether council believes that it has better judgment on certain issues that might be more controversial or matters of citizen judgment than a quasi judicial board as the zoning hearing boards. So I think staff stands by our recommendation to have a special exception. And even when this came back over a year ago when Gary Johnson was employed, he was like, yeah, special exception.
And just to be, so special, by saying tobacconists can be, you know, can open in different zones of the city by being granted a special exception, and that comes from the zoning hearing board rather than coming from city council?
Correct.
Is how it's proposed right now.
Yeah, and as a quasi judicial board, if council has a problem with the ruling of the zoning hearing board, and the solicitor can correct me if wrong, there can be a suit over that that does not work quite equitably the other way. But in any case, there needs to be a hearing. It needs to be publicly advertised. It needs to be, the same procedures for notice work either way. It's that, it's almost a matter of tradition at this point, what is special exception versus conditional use. So you'll see that in the zoning ordinance, a lot more significant uses come before conditional use, whereas a shop wants to open up and sell some cigarettes and, you know, glass, like, and paraphernalia like already exists. It's treated just like we do for special exceptions for other retail businesses.
Also, I just wanted to mention that our zoning hearing board, right, they take their job seriously. They do a job. I'm comfortable with them having that in their hands and making that decision.
No, the way.
Please forget the lesson.
Right, right.
The way this is written, they cannot have air dancers, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if a different kind of business opened up and had air dancers outside, this ordinance would not apply to it?
Correct, and that is one of the points of consistency that the county brings up, which I think is worth exploring. Whether that is something that's worth exploring, at the delay of this ordinance, however, it doesn't seem to be in what council's interests.
I think it was air dancers, and then also like some of the provisions around signage and lighting that like would, yeah, should we pass this only then be specific to tobacconists? But, right, we might consider introducing to other types of retail.
So if we pass this tonight, there's a very real possibility that in a few months, we're going to be advertising and spending time to change the sign ordinance either specifically or in general and the lighting restrictions, because there'll be some blowback from people saying, well, why is my business limited and other ones aren't?
I would, I would, I would hope that maybe right to that point of like codifying more systematically, like if there are updates we want to make to our zoning ordinance, and I think we've done this in the past, but if there are updates that we want to make to the zoning ordinance that don't feel particularly urgent, like they're not responding to like an urgent need in the moment, that we could kind of aggregate those and then like pass, you know, at the end of the year or the beginning of the year or something like that. Just to your point, Jim, with not necessarily having to go and advertise just in a few months, but right, like to take into account all any adjustments we may make.
Otherwise, you are correct. This was something that I thought would probably come up for council sometime. About a year ago, expediency prevented it. Even so, Knox, our solicitor, has confirmed that if it's not a structural part of the building, signs such as hung window signs, portable signs, or temporary signs are fair game for eventual removal. So my advice to everybody with, especially in our historic district downtown, would be, please be cautious before you spend money on doing something that might come up for zoning amendment before council. So please ask for enforcement to worry. Thanks.
The way I see it, Jim, is they would be two different ordinances still and have to be advertised separately, because this is for tobacconists, and it happens to have a sign. And so you're saying this would be a different ordinance with signs, since I'm feeling.
For example, if we eliminate temporarily, if we eliminate the signage provision in this, then we can have omnibus change to sign it, because I'm thinking of at least half dozen places downtown that are currently in violation of our ordinance is dealing with use of the sidewalk for purposes, whether they be a bench or a sharing table, or planters, or in one case, what looks like a carved eagle. Technically, all of those are in violation of our ordinance.
I will speak for myself and on behalf of code enforcement. There is a little bit of ambiguity when it comes to how you interpret the sidewalk versus the extension of the sidewalk that is treated as the utility strip, and whether the adequate five foot of passage amongst those obstructions is enough to satisfy our sidewalk ordinance. So I think like, for instance, if there is an obstruction between like a city shade tree that's in a tree pit in the so-called utility strip, which the public can typically identify by other brickwork or other siding that's beyond the typical five, six, eight-foot sidewalk path, I'll speak for myself, not code enforcement, but that is treated still as part of the city's pedestrian pathways. So as long as you can take your five feet around those or between those, it typically meets our guidelines. However, if there's an air dancer that's blowing across the sidewalk after, you know, miles gust of wind, that's a bit different.
One was lying down, didn't he?
Yeah, I guess I have one key that.
That's a tech matter.
Yeah, well, just to keep, so we'll, we'll keep this ordinance the way it is because we've been very thoughtful in fixing a problem. But I agree with you, Jim, like having a, right, like looking at that stuff and making it more uniform, right? But just not as an emergency, because this was out of a need and then out of an.
I just want us to be consistent, because it's an inconsistency that ends us up in court. in court.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree. Thank you. And with, with that, I'm gonna ask for a roll call.
An ordinance of the city of Meville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Articles 1302, 1303, and 1305 of the Meville zoning code, providing for a definition of tobacconist as a distinct form of retail use, providing for tobacconist to operate as a special exception in the MU2, MU3, GBM, and the EDC district, providing standards and criteria that apply to tobacconist as a special exception, and providing for an effective date severability and repealer. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
All right, discussion pollinator guard.
Does council want to table this until the EAC has a chance to provide their feedback?
I mean, I don't know that we need to table, I mean, it's just a discussion, so there's nothing, I mean, we can just talk a little bit without maybe taking action and just get clear on next steps. So we did table last time, and I think I requested that because the EAC, I was hoping that they would send us the, the notes from the conversation, the, the letter, I'm not sure if they did or not, if we just had to bring them. Great, okay. So while there was a conversation, and there were minutes, and maybe that's what we will, but, so, yeah, I think, as we kind of talked about at the top, thanks Jenny for coming and sharing your thoughts. EAC reviewed, there, there were the, the thoughts that are summarized here, and I think that, I think that what Jenny brought up today adds some like important elements to, to consider too. And Mayor, I appreciate your thought about maybe try to actually like rather than having any middle, like, it, like, it was really helpful to have Fred Stormwater Management at a EAC meeting recently, make the group learn a lot. I don't know if we can similarly shorten this at this point, but if there's any member of code enforcement like this, is that who would, who, who might be able to talk, to sit down with the EAC?
I would prefer it be Justin.
Okay.
As he oversees all the entirety of code enforcement. So I, I'll ask Justin if he's available for the EAC meeting on Thursday.
I think he's the appropriate person, because he, he had some, you know, concerns and questions and, and, yeah, I think he's the right person.
Yeah, I think that would be great, because I think, you know, what we're seeing in front of us is like thoughts from, from the EAC and thoughts and, you know, like responding, responses from staff and like have to weed that, and so it might just be nice to be able to work that out and see if we can't get to a place where, you know, I think there's like just a shared thought on, on what the right move would be, so, yeah, Justin, if you come Thursday, it'd be great. Not, maybe we can work out like a separate time with a non-quorum number of EAC members.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Does anybody have any other questions or comments on the pollinator garden?
When you're looking at the pollinator ordinance, I did a little bit of research and this addresses the having pollinator gardens in the front of your home, which also have sidewalks. Up to half a percent of children and up to 15% of adults are hypersensitive to a specific bee antigen, and up to seven and a half percent would fall in the category of allergic. So I would recommend that you do not have pollinator gardens in front yard, because there's an elevated chance of people who are allergic being stung. If they're out back, if they're on your side yard, that's not an issue.
I, I'm gonna push back just a little bit on that, only because I once had like yellow jackets in the front yard and the grass was low, and I got swarmed by those guys, right? Although I am not allergic, you know, bees are gonna be where bees are, do you know what I mean, like, and I do dig it, I, because I have lots of flowers in my front yard, do you know what I mean? Like, I, I dig what you're saying, though, I just don't think that that's the reason, right, like.
You're attracting even more, yes, you're gonna have bees everywhere. I have them underground, I have yellow jackets underground occasionally.
Yeah, that's.
But if I put a pollinator garden in, I'm going to attract a lot more.
I think that that note can be taken into consideration when we discuss further.
Maybe you have bee knowledge.
Sure.
Those who show my front yard.
I know, I was just, yeah, I was just thinking, yellow jackets tend to just be everywhere, like, I think, I don't know that, I don't know, yeah, I guess there is, the intent is to increase bees, but I don't, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Do you guys, any, any other comments?
Just thank you for coming in, so, I mean, I just feel like we're gonna have valuable information, and then if Justin can chime in, that'll be really helpful. So, thank you.
Discussion update on active transportation plan. Peter?
This is pretty much just a teaser. I am working as previously as I can to meet our deadlines for the grant submission. There is a final progress report due to the PA Downtown Center April 30th. Our consultant transportation engineers have a deadline of April 25th to return their studies to me. In the meantime, I am doing the evil, evil work of formatting things and, you know, putting text boxes in the right place where Microsoft Word just won't suddenly shoot them three pages down because of a misplaced comma in a line. Otherwise, I think what you have before you as a draft executives pre-actual captures the nature of what the plan will be fleshed out to be, I will kindly ask for some patience as I address every single thing that has come up then, of which I mentioned there are over 70 activities that were proposed, either as part of discussions with the consultant, with our steering committee, or as commentary embedded within our public comment, or as given to us by Crawford County's Safe Streets For All Safety Action Plan. I prefer not to dismiss, not to address, I prefer not to ignore anything that has become before us, but to address them and say whether this activity should be dismissed and give you a justification why it should be dismissed rather than leave it off, and once again have, you know, we've been talking about this for years, for years, for years, and yet that thing that we've been talking about doesn't show up in the document. So if there's anything that you'd like to talk about your values, again, you're the ones that are eventually adopting this plan in the first place. I've probably overloaded it with things that I think could be approachable in the first three years, and which I think over the next couple of weeks and after the result of the transportation consultants' studies come back to us, can be pared down. But the thing I want to emphasize is that I'm really trying for this plan to not, how do I put it before, not be ignored on the shelf, but to be on the shelf and waiting for the next opportunity to do the next best thing that's already written in the plan. So if there are things that's in there that you do not want to commit the city to do at all, please tell me. If there are priorities that you have that are not reflected in this that has been given the feedback of the, you know, public comment and our steering committee, please tell me. It's just that the, it's a timely matter of getting document together to meet our grant expectations at this point, so expediency all around is appreciated. I expect to have something before you for the May 6th council meeting. There's been a request to have some presentation on this, so we'll see what I can whip up in the meantime. That's what I got.
Peter, when do you want us to have any, you were asking us for like tomorrow, Friday?
April 25th.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you want us to have anything back?
Yep. Yep, that's the, the adopted report, the report needs to be adopted, the plan needs to be adopted in 78 Downtown Center by June 30th effectively, that means middle of June, which effectively means a month's worth of revisions, and major revisions within that month would tax me a bit too much.
So do they have any questions on that? I'll just say that, you know, there was like a steering team. I won't commit them to anything, but it gives support there in presentation preparations. I don't have to do it all by yourself.
That's great. Also, just, I'll note the, maybe we should, this isn't the space for this, but the North Main Street pedestrian crossings, signage and safety markings, are they done? Because have you guys, have you seen the flashers on North Main?
Oh, yeah, the Alagany.
She's done to me. I feel like we can check one on.
Yep, that was one component of the 2017 safety study that was, that was prepared by Pendot and Moline Record and Associates back then, they have those flashers at those locations. However, that plan also imposed on us high visibility crosswalks and signage plan that would supersede that which was proposed in 2015. So a couple of weeks ago, I did meet with Pendot to walk the corridor again and see what our responsibilities are, because even though it is Penn State Road, they have jurisdiction about what is approved on there, it is our local responsibility to maintain crosswalk markings within designated crosswalks and the approved signage along that way. So we're catching up a bit too late, in my opinion, but we're catching up. And those harbor FPs, sorry, rectangular rapid flesh and beacons are, we're glad to see those. I saw those in operation, I could see those things flink a little bit a half mile away for better.
I keep thinking there's another one.
I got the, there's a, is it Safe Streets For All, there's grant that's open, I mean, it's Pendot, so, or it's not Pendot, it's, it's Department of Transportation at large, which might not be feasible, but that is open in through June or something.
Right, that's what the.
Is that what the county has?
That's what the county is, they're pursuing their safety action.
They're pursuing, okay.
It's currently in progress, they have the same timeline as we do to get their safety action plan out by June. There was difficulty in trying to coordinate how to do something that would be feasible for us all, because a safety action plan is a prerequisite to implementation funding that the county, sorry, the federal government, at least at the time, offered as a possible grant award for implementing a safety action plan in the first place. Again, planning and implementation, planning comes with federal strings, and implementation comes with federal strings. The county stepped up to do a safety action plan countywide in advance of our ability to do so, because we're already committing law works.
I didn't, I ran out of time. Do they, are there intersections in their safety plan that in the city that, that are addressed here? Or are they like different issues, safety and, yeah?
No. Well, yeah, that's, let me backtrack. As a result of the countywide investigation of problem lengths of road intersections, they naturally prioritize those intersections countywide which have problems, none of those intersections were in the city. And this is not a bad thing, because the Safe Streets For All framework was to prevent death and serious injury. The metrics for deciding what to prioritize is that those deaths and serious injuries by the data should have happened within the past five years of crash information reporting. Unfortunately, we have had those that have not yet been incorporated into the crash reporting. So it's just an accident of the data that a lot of those deaths and serious injuries don't happen in the city of Meville, because most of our traffic is at lower speeds than the high-speed state routes that exist on more of the rural roads. So for better or worse, we have far, far more concentration of not-so-serious injuries in fender benders, and even at the North Main Street intersection, the Alagany College student that had, that was more than five years ago, so that's an accident of the reporting, can't even count that. But that's not necessarily a bad thing when it comes to the safety of everybody else in the county.
And I've sat on, Pendot is also separately looking at North Main Street for safety issues and traffic calming pedestrians, more than just the discussion about a roundabout at Limburg, there's an extensive part of North Main Street that will be addressed as part of that. So I think there's some multiple aspects between law works, Pendot separately seeking offset funding from the, the Safe Streets For All funding.
Yeah, pretty much, we're, we're living the metaphor of the ducks paddling rapidly underwater while trying to be calm on the surface, there's lots of stuff in the background on this, it's all coalescing at once.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Peter. Discussion parking meter rates. Peter again.
All right, so this needs to, this discussion needs to come up again, even by our own ordinances, we only have so long before a pilot program needs to be permanent, and this is, we've brought up long enough and has been warranted, that is the first step towards any improvement to our financial situation in the parking fund. We really only have, and speaking for all staff here who are welcome to chip in as well, the parking is either funded by user fees or by taxes, a combination of those both. And as far as I have been able to discern from past decade or so of our finances, user fees and taxes have not been able to offset the debt burden we have taken on for the infrastructure that we've been providing for these. It was brought up over a year ago, I believe at this point, that raising meter fees as proposed before you is an option to have some stability in revenues that we don't experience right now. But Knox Law Firm has also informed us that it needs to happen by ordinance and probably soon, because a pilot program can't go on forever.
And also, I'll point out too, that I know there wanted, there was a holistic discussion that about parking. Unfortunately, when it comes to the meter rates, regardless of what the decision is on the parking garage, whether it's a demolition or it's rehab, the meter rates need to increase regardless of what that direction, direction that takes. Now, the permits fit in a little bit differently, but I don't think that the revenue, quote unquote, we don't really have revenue, but the revenue from a permit program is not going to be enough to help offset the cost of either demolition or rehab.
I was just, I, I, yeah, I recognize that the, I recognize maybe when hearing you say of like taking the issue separately, I will say that I think I had a lot more preservation around adjusting the meter rates and the 100-page memo on parking draft that we received, like actually was really, really helpful for me to like get my whole mind around, you know, the various like levers that we need to think about pulling to, you know, right, the situation that, I mean, still, still is like physically complete, there's not like a whole lot of money to come around parking, but anyway, I just, for what it is worth. But anyway, I just, for what it is worth, it was really helpful to me and, and make me feel better about this decision. So, so for me, it is like, recognize it as a separate ordinance and taking into account all of the different recommendations that we are seeing, at least in that draft from, from staff, was very helpful, right? It felt like, it was like, okay, we're just kind of taking one measure to try to solve something that's much bigger.
Even though parking permits are not part of this discussion, I would say that part of any incentive for people to take advantage of a parking permit rather than meters, and it's been pointed out for decades and decades that meters are an enforcement mechanism to create turnover. Whereas some people would probably be better off with a, the parking permit available to them. But the financial choice is better to go with meters that take up a space in front of somebody's business. They are related, however, as a precedent before you, those who would incentivize to, to take a parking permit would do so probably in relationship to how much they'd have to pay at a meter.
Peter, I'm confused about something. You have Schedule A off-street meters, parking time limits and rates. Schedule D titled the same way. And for example, the Academy Theater in Schedule A has twelve-hour terms and two-hour terms. And Schedule B has two-hour terms.
That's right.
These to be established, so that's what's proposed?
So are you, are you saying that this Schedule A is being deleted?
It would be deleted, unfortunately for pragmatic reasons. If you pass this and, you know, third hour, whatever, and it becomes effective in a month at the site, all the meter heads would still be marked and posted as being the former meters until all of the meters could be recalibrated and reposted en masse. So as it is even in our existing code, there is provisions where there are the way that things are and the way that things will be superseded upon implementation.
So if we adopted this ordinance, Schedule A would basically be deleted. Schedule, Schedule B would be adopted and be renamed Schedule A?
No, confusingly, you'd still have Schedule A and Schedule B coinciding, at least for a time period. Because unfortunately, uh, those two twelve-hour meters in the Academy Theater lot, they're just kind of there for some reason. So we're already enforcing based on what's on Schedule A. The point is, as soon as those meter heads would be replaced and reposted with two-hour meters, you know, we have the ordinance in place that's saying, as soon as those are replaced with two-hour meters, then that law becomes, comes into effect. As long as they're still posted twelve-hour meters, we can't enforce a two-hour meter time limit on a meter head that's posted in sight for the public as twelve meters, sorry, twelve hours.
But then in the future, when we do switch those out, the ordinance on the books will have this old schedule and what is then the new schedules?
Correct. So I guess it's kind of like if, when you review, um, like to the firefighter contract, right? And you see this applies to somebody who was hired prior to year 2000. And then this applies to people after, you can delete the hired prior to year 2000 after all of those people have retired. So same kind of principle. And what happens is that if the ordinance is updated again, that table would be removed.
So if we have two meters we could put there right now, we wouldn't have to worry about this.
Like if we were, if we staged like new meter heads, like that were ready to go and like on day twenty-one. Right, like could, could we, is, is that, is that insane? Like is that do, that's?
That's probably not practical, set that expectation.
And I hope it works as expected.
It does feel like it would be the, on paper, the more streamlined it can do, but I recognize that way.
Trust me, you know, I like cleanliness and order. And if I can't make this any more clean and orderly, then this is just how it's gotta be.
It did seem like that this drafted ordinance does like the language allows for permits, like I saw that in there, like
Right.
When, at, at a time when we might, um, or parking passes or something, like would we would introduce that?
Our current ordinance, uh, only proposes meters and reserves spaces.
And this was open and that, which was great to see. One, I, I, one, um, in the new schedules that are proposed to be established, the longest amount of time that someone could spend in a meter is five hours. I, I have seen folks who work in shops downtown who might have an eight-hour shift, you, right, park in a twelve-hour meter because they can park there for the day for the course of their whole shift. Are we assuming that they would get a pass, you know, right, like, like there, there might not be reserved spot? Like are we trying to push those people into reserve or parking passes?
Either one. I think that the intent would be that we recognize that there are those individuals who work downtown who utilize the twelve-hour meters. And until there is a permit or some sort of pass, um, system established, we would leave the twelve-hour meters for that time.
Theoretically, they might have a lunch break long enough to feed the meter for the other five hours.
And theoretically, somebody who really only needs two hours might park in a twelve-hour meter and scrub up their whole thing anyway. So the hope is eventually there will be an attractive and cheaper option. No guarantees, but then having interspersed twelve-hour meters, because if the point of the meter is to incur turnover downtown, then to have twelve-hour meters compete with a cheaper, more attractive offering for off-street parking spaces in our lots, in my view, because becomes like counterproductive both ways.
This ordinance is not going to address reserved or leased spaces.
Oh, I got that, I know that here.
I, I received the, uh, some input from constituents during when we were going to work on that. And I know that it's not included in this particular ordinance.
Yeah, you can say we've been working on that a couple of months ago, so.
But I would, when that day comes, just for the record, I would recommend we follow the example, for example, of Erie, which has leased space and reserved space. There's a difference between the two. You know, one's first come, first served and the other one is, that is your space. And of course, there's a price difference that goes with it.
Can you explain just for all that, when you're talking about leased and reserved, leased strikes me as like a real estate term, is that you have exclusive rights to a piece of real estate?
No, you have a leased, you have a, a right.
Like a parking pass or permit or something that lets you park in a lot or something?
Yeah, you have a, yeah, so if there's two hundred spaces in a lot and fifty of them are reserved, no, you get the leased space, but you don't get the reserved space. If you want that, you're paying a, a five or ten dollar a month premium.
Right. That's what previous parking studies done for the city have called shotgun permits, where you are very likely to get any space in a lot, but you don't get that exam, assigned space always open to you, whether you're using it or not. You'll still be able to park in a lot, just not, you know, always, the, the red car, yeah.
That's, I mean, Allegheny has that, right? They've got the color-coded lots, right? You can park in one.
Gold parks in gold, blue parks in blue, but it's, it's first come, first served to whatever's open there. And it has to work really well for most other cities, as far as I can tell.
Just a quick question. This is a draft. You want us to look through it?
Yes.
When do you need any input that we would have? Like what is your date for this particularly? If we wanted to give input, do you have a date for that?
I'm deferring to you and to management on, on this.
I just want to make sure we're clear so we know when to, you know, we need to have any thoughts or ideas.
If you also want to have anything into it by the twenty-fifth, just so everything's on the same schedule, um, I think that would be acceptable, that would be fine. If you need some more time, can certainly do that too.
Yeah, sure.
I just, again, I just want to make sure we're getting you things in time and manner.
Why just do we, would we look at?
We'd probably.
An ordinance at the next time, so maybe on the sixth.
Yeah, if possible, yeah.
Excuse me, question. Can I have your notes to answer that question? Yeah, your red, your red noted. Hasn't been said out loud yet. I'm pretty good at saying what parts out loud. Orders we're discussing is.
There you go.
Sorry.
Uh, yeah, uh, the projected twenty-three, twenty-three parking fund net income of negative one thousand one hundred and three dollars. I did a little bit of arithmetic taking on that. And it turns out, uh, we did not lose one thousand one hundred and three dollars. We only lost six hundred and eight dollars in twenty twenty-three according to actual revenue. So if that gives a little perspective, I just wanted to correct myself.
Thanks, Alex.
Yeah. Our parking revenues were negative. Just as the example that I gave you.
Right on. Um, okay, by the twenty. Alright, uh, new business, resolution, award bid and authorized signatures, refuse contract, Tri-County Industries. Can I have a motion to award?
So move.
Discussion.
As council is informed, Tri-County came in as the lowest bidder on the refuse contract. The way we bid it out was for a set five years with an alternate of an additional five years. After review and discussion, we as staff suggest that we, that council awards the bid to Tri-County, who are here, if you have any questions, um, for the full ten years, for a total of a little over eleven million dollars for a ten-year contract.
No, I know I'm catching you unawares, but what is the current rate we're paying? What is our current contract?
Uh, over the last five years is four point three million.
Why? If this is the way that we've always done it, why, why, like what's the benefit of?
To award for ten years?
Yeah.
We think just based on what we've seen in the past and experience with previous bids, that there's too high of a risk after the next five years in not accepting the rates proposed by Tri-County for the alternate five years. That we believe that they'll come in considerably higher if we were to bid it again in five years.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see that in the other bits.
As I say, it's in the alternate pricing on your, in front of you.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a general question, not about this, but is there anybody who recycles dry cell batteries and inkjet cartridges?
Staples is the only thing I know with the cartridges.
Seems like waste, have we run into, use garbage?
Speaking of which, thanks for, thanks for being here. I'm sitting through an hour of this meeting so fast.
Hey, we're still awake.
It's gonna get you a hell of a million dollars, so, you know, it's good work.
It's a best, it's a, it's a good hour.
Yeah. Okay, so I, I was on your website and I saw in twenty nineteen, there was a post about like what happens to things, to recycling, in particular glass when it's recycled, then it, is that still the case that it is used to like as a landfill cover?
Yeah, but we re-reverse it.
And then, and then there was like an option, I think I saw in that post, um, that it could go back to the municipality or something, be returned? Is that, did I read that right? It was like the glass could be collected and then returned? I'll look it up again. I swear I read it on the website, but I just didn't know what that meant. And I don't honestly know what we would do with it or why we would ever want it back. But I think diverting it probably from landfill would be, um, what we look to do. So that, that's still how glass in, in recycling?
Use it for road cover, daily cover.
So to be clear, this, the second five years is just to lock in that?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And the rest of what we recycle, what happens to that?
There's a video on there. If you ever, if you ever want a tour of it.
Okay.
Just get hold of somebody and they, I can schedule a tour of the recycle plant. Yeah, there's a video that was made like three years ago, four years ago.
Yeah.
Video of that and the landfill. So.
That would be awesome. Um, I think I might have a resolution that hasn't been updated, but the first clause is, okay. About recycling work and not in the lab.
Do we have any other questions? For Tri-County?
Nope. Um, do you, I'm sorry, um, uh, do you have educational materials for people, like users? Right, like there's some do's and don'ts for recycling stuff. And, and, but and for throwing stuff away, like you're not supposed to put just loose trash in your garbage can.
Right.
Right? I, I suspect that's like a big culprit for litter, is that like people put loose stuff in the garbage and then it flies. That's my theory.
Your cart manufacturer, if you want literature on it, they make a QR code now that you could probably have them print up and you could stick it, give it to people or mail it out to them. And they can scan it with their phone. On the new cards, they, it comes with a QR code, so anybody can scan it. So any new cards you ever order, it should have a QR code on it now, but yeah.
That's good to know. We, we do our own cards, is that?
Well, there are cards, yes, but we buy, we did buy them from somebody.
Well, it's interesting though, I know just because of moving into, in, at next year to Westmead, like they're very much like, this is how your garbage has to be. I don't know, do we need to be, do we have, I don't know, because of, do we have a thing? It was very specific, right?
In the, I think in the calendars that are mailed out from Tri, that Tri County produces, I think there are some like factoids in that as well.
Okay, yeah, I, cause I didn't know that.
There are light bulbs in the recycling industry.
I think there are facts on that. Um, and those will get mailed out, they get mailed out annually. With your water gun.
Alright. Would be good to increase public dedication in particular. Again, that's my theory as of late, is that litter, like, like it's just this time of year too, when like this snow has melted and there's some garbage everywhere, all over like this sidewalks, I'm saying.
If you look on a, if you look on a website, it has uh, different listings for our different facilities. And there's two you might want to look at, a lot of people find, is one about Tri-County Recycling. And then there's one on Seneca Landfill, so you can see start and finish. Everything that works out.
Where, where are you located?
We're located in River City.
Alright, um, roll call.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville, awarding a contract for the term of July twenty twenty-five to June twenty thirty-five in the amount of eleven million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred dollars to Tri-County Industries for recycling, for, excuse me, for residential garbage, leaf waste and recycling collection, disposal and processing. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, folks.
A good one. Resolution, recognizing Jill Staff.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. A resolution of the city, or of the Council of the City of Meadville, recognizing the extraordinary service and dedication of Captain Jill Staff upon her retirement from the Meadville Fire Department. upon her retirement from the Meadville Fire Department, resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, that whereas Captain Jill Staff began her career with the Meadville Fire Department on August 2004, becoming the first female career firefighter in the department's history. And whereas throughout her remarkable 20-year career, Captain Staff broke barriers and set a lasting example of excellence, becoming the first female officer in the Meadville Fire Department and rising to the ranks of captain through her skill and unwavering dedication. And whereas Captain Staff faithfully served the citizens of Meadville with honor and courage until her retirement on March 1st, 2025, responding to emergencies, fires, and calls for service with professionalism and steadfast commitment to public safety. And whereas she played an integral role in mentoring community members, championing, championing teamwork and fostering a culture of integrity, compassion, and respect within the department. And whereas her contributions extended beyond emergency response, including fire prevention efforts, public education, and community outreach that helped strengthen the department's bond with those it serves. And whereas Captain Staff's groundbreaking career and her legacy as a trailblazer and role model will continue to inspire future generations of firefighters in Meadville and beyond. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Meadville does hereby recognize and commend Captain Jill Staff for her 20 years of outstanding and trailblazing service to the Meadville Fire Department, and congratulates her on the occasion of her retirement with deep appreciation and very, and very best wishes for the years ahead. Adopted and approved by council on today, April 15th, 2025. Roll call.
McNate?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Resolution, authorized signatures, settlement. Kind of a motion.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
Settlement agreement, uh, that was negotiated a few weeks ago.
Right on. Vogel?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a settlement agreement between Timothy and Rose Marie Groves and the City of Meadville. McNate?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Does this?
It's Tri County.
Oh, that's the Tri. Why did it look like $11,000 to me? Oh, that would have been better. That's why I'm like, what is this? Like, why do I have an extra? Sorry. All right. Public comment on non-agenda items?
We have none.
Councilmember statements, Jill?
Thank you. Once again, thanks to Jill Staff, congratulations to her. And as you have many years of health and happiness and fulfillment. Also, we have Easter coming this week, and we're in Passover now. So to all of you, peace and joy.
Thanks, Jim.
Um, just, I hope everyone has a good holiday. Thanks for coming and speaking out, and that's really it.
Yeah, I did a little same, thanks everyone for coming and hope everyone has a great holiday. Peter, you're doing a great job, I'm, I'm very impressed. Well, everyone that's working on this, the work you guys are doing, and the diligence you're putting in.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, folks, for coming tonight, for speaking, for being here, bearing this. I want to thank in particular our city volunteer authority boards and commissions. Tonight, right, we had a few zoning updates in front of us. We had the alternative transportation plan. And we had the pollinator ordinance, all of them very much, you know, we have staff to thank in large part. Peter, you, in large part for, for most of those. But, but, but also really value the volunteers who have, have really spent a lot of time, you know, thinking about some of those policy updates. And who don't have to, right, but choose to, to give their time and energy to our city. And you could be one of them. There are openings on the city's boards, authorities, and commissions. And we have, what, like, three more days, they're due the 18th, so they're due Friday, applications that can be found here at the city building and on the website. Two openings on beautification, two on EAC now, that's new. One on the rec authority, one on wa, two on water authority, one opening on planning commission, one opening on redevelopment authority, and one opening on the zoning hearing board, which will hear about tobacconist. So if you care about tobacconist, that's where you can go. But again, that's, that's where a lot of the work gets done by, by volunteers and city, just citizen representatives. So you just have to live here, and that makes you qualified, so apply. I also want to give thanks to city staff, you know, for everything, all the time, but also how you brought all that money into the city, way to get that money from the market house, that's great. And, and very exciting, we're taking care of our assets we come to borrow. This is great, it's a good day. And to, to Jill, to, to Jill's staff, appreciate her, you know, long career of service to the city. It's like 15 years ago, my cousin, who was in school at Point Park, did a video documentary about Jill Staff.
Wow.
Yeah, because I have another cousin who's also a female firefighter. And so I was like, I, I think I wasn't even in Meadville at the time, but like learning of Jill is, is just a cool entry point. And I think I heard that she was responsible for the car seat checks happening at the fire department, which is, which is a very cool service. So grateful to her for that. And I, that's all I will say, thank you.
Thanks, Autumn. I am just gonna, you know, reiterate everything everybody says. We are so happy to have the people that have worked so hard to protect us, right, like Jill, and the people that volunteer their time in our authority boards and commissions, right? We've got a brilliant staff of people that work for Meadville that, that actually work for Meadville, right? We say it's Meadville staff, but, but they're actually, like, working for Meadville to make this place better, right? And I, I think that's great. I have been reflecting this week, because, right, like, my mother, it was her birthday. She's been gone many years now. And I miss her terribly, but what what has been said about her, right, her legacy is, I, I was at a family reunion, the other side, and they said, what we knew about Helen was that if you knew her, you'd never be cold, you'd never go be hungry, go without a place to stay. And you, right, like, you always had someplace to go. And that is, that is a real woman. Her humanity was bounds ahead, right? And so when I'm reflecting on my mother, I'm, I'm reflecting on what we can do better, especially myself, right? To live up to a giant like that and a legacy that she left. And I think Meadville, I think that we, we show our humanity quite often with our vegetable gardens, right? Where people can walk by and they don't have to ask, right? They can take what they need. Where we have shelters and we have people who care. And I just want us to keep moving forward with that, right? I want us to keep doing those things and creating a legacy here where people feel like they belong, they feel safe, and they feel valued, and they feel wanted, right? And they don't feel like they have to ask for respect or dignity, right? So I just, in honor of my mother, and her birthday was Sunday, she was born April 13th, 1942. She was one heck of a lady, who, who loved me beyond, right? And, and her loss is deafening at this point. So I just want us to, in honor of our humanity, understand that we don't have to have much to do much and to be much, right? And this place could be good all the time. So with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Discussion? Vogel?
McNate?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.